All right, let's get the meeting started. It's called the meeting to order. Number one, well, Tom, before we do pledge allegiance, you want to read your little bit?
I will. The city has determined that it is not practical or prudent to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to the local state of emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, this meeting will be an electronic meeting and conducted under Minnesota State Statute, Section thirteen D point zero two one. To the extent practical, members of the public may attend the meeting by utilizing the published link in call-in information. Looking at the crowd tonight, Mr. Mayor, would it be okay to forego all of the protocol guideline overview?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thanks, Tom. Meeting's called to order, so let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was a revised agenda and then a revised agenda version two. The first revision was an inclusion of a discussion regarding the Met Council. Reserve capacity loan repayment structure, and then today we also added an update on QuickTrip. And the process there, given some of the discussion on social media over the weekend.
Sounds good. Any motions?
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Second by Amanda. Josh, you go first.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Amanda. Vote aye as well. Agenda is adopted. We have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, so we'll move into public comment. Is there anyone on that would care to speak under public comment tonight?
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom Wolf, County Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Tom.
Good, good.
You're just fine.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I hope everybody's doing well. I'm trying to get this camera thing plugged in, so. Just a building update at the county, we're putting on that nice addition there, and that's going to be, the new addition will be done probably the first couple of weeks in April. And then they're going to start working on the end that we're in and remodeling that and taking out, you know, some, I don't know, some old things in there that we don't want around, but. So our meetings are going to work, they're going to kick us out of our boardroom for a, it sounds like six or eight months, so we're going to be doing all Skype until probably December or later. You probably heard our tax levy ended up on one point nine nine percent. Our road projects are, we're starting to take shape on what we're going to get done this year. Credit River, it sounds like they're going to get permission to become a city tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow, so we will again have eight cities in the county. And also, I thirty-five is in its last year of construction, after I think it's been since eighteen or nineteen, and being on the I thirty-five solutions, I think it's start, we'll start talking about in two thousand twelve, so. Nine, ten years from that start to finish, so anyhow, that's all I have tonight unless there's any questions.
Do you want to have any questions for Commissioner Wolf?
I hope to get into a live meeting.
Thanks, Tom.
So, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Anyone else care to speak under public comment? One, twice? All right, public comment is closed. Move on to consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on consent they want to remove or discuss? A little bit more detail or have questions? If not, feel free to make a question.
To approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Timmerman. Second by, was that Josh?
Bryce.
He said, that was Bryce. All right. Bryce, I got to get used to your voice. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Josh, you go ahead. Vote first.
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll jump right into general business.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only item we have under general business tonight is appointment of a planning commissioner. As the council is aware, council member Chinky was the, previously on the commission. With his election to the city council, it automatically creates a vacancy. The council had directed us to post the position, which we did. They had also appointed an interview panel consisting of community development staff, council member Berg, and the commission chair, Nicole. We had two applicants that applied for the position. They had conducted the interviews and are recommending the appointment of Tara Schroder to the vacancy. So we'd be asking the council to approve Resolution twenty-one zero eight, appointing a member to the planning commission, based on the recommendation from the interview panel. We would also like to point out to the council that we've had another commissioner resign because they moved out of the community, and we have our normal two commissioners that are up for, their terms have ended. The council has established a practice in the past that we automatically post positions, even, post positions and ask sitting commissioners to reapply if they're interested. This is a little bit unusual because we have a vacancy now, and we have another vacancy with Tom Humphries leaving, and then we have the other two commissioners up, so we're asking if the council, given the circumstances, wanted to deviate from that practice or simply post the three open positions that we would have.
And the two that are, are going, have expressed interest that they would be reapplying if that was the case, correct?
They have both indicated that they would seek reappointment.
I would opt to just appoint them.
I do like the posting route, so I can see where this is a little bit unique. Bryce, I'd be curious to get your insight on, as a former planning commissioner.
Um, I think with the last posting, just getting two applicants and you got two that are going to apply anyway. They've done a really nice job and, and they enjoy their, their time on the commission. I would say if we may not get any more applicants except them, and. So I guess I would go on the route of just go through the appointment.
So now, just to be devil's advocate, just last time we made them reapply and pre-interview, is that going to be setting precedents then if we do not do that again this time?
I don't think so. I think there's clear, if the council chose, chose to go that route, I think there's clear extenuating circumstances. We've essentially had four, two vacancies and two positions open with potential turnover of up to four commissioners within a three-month period. That's a little bit unique. Normally, it's un, it's unusual to even have another person resign or have something come up around reappointment time. So I would say that you would not be setting a precedence, and again, this is a directive or a policy that's set by council, so you guys can, you guys are the boss. You can deviate from it when you, when you want.
Well, in that case, then I would go ahead and just say, let's appoint them.
We're going to have one open spot no matter what.
So we would be posting it, yep.
Do we post that? Just offer it to the other person that applied?
My understanding is that was not the recommendation out of the interview panel. We would invite them to apply again, but my understanding was that the interview panel was not recommending automatic appointment of that other individual. They were aware of the resignation of Mr. Humphries at the time that they were conducting the interviews.
Okay.
And I can reinforce everything Tom just said, that Tara, for sure, and I think that's obviously why we made the recommendation that way. But if, if the other candidate would like to reapply and go through the interview again, you know, totally cool and give it a shot that way, but I think absolutely reposting it to see if anybody else is interested, and then I just, I concur with everybody else on the appointment too. I mean, I think having as much stability as we can during this time of instability would be nice, so I would say reappoint and then post the one.
Yep, I'm on board. Anyone object to that approach?
So just to clarify.
We're looking for a motion. Sorry, go on, Tom.
So just going to clarify, there, the, there would be, fill the vacancy created by Bryce. We would post the position for Tom, and we would bring back a resolution, reappointing the current commissioners if they still wanted to seek reappointment, and, but going forward with other commission positions, this is considered to be extenuating circumstances, and we would still automatically post.
All right.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-one oh eight.
Second.
Motion by, I think that was a second by Amanda?
Sure.
Bryce, you want to vote first?
Sure. Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. All right. This is general business, so we're on to reports.
The usual standing item on our meetings is council meeting format. Is there any desire from the council at this time to vary from the status quo?
I'm shaking. No one jumping to change that, so we'll keep it the same.
Okay. The next item under reports is this, we're looking for direction from the council. As the council is aware, we had negotiated an amendment to our service agreement with the Met Council that basically put in, for lack of a better term, a circuit breaker, but a cap on the liability that we could accrue related to the reserve capacity loan. Just going back a little bit further, council, recall that the Met Council had constructed a sixteen point four million dollar interceptor out to Elko New Market, and under the terms of that original agreement, we were responsible to pay that back over time through a combination of a surcharge on our SAC fee that we collect for the Met Council. That's above and beyond what everybody else in the metro area collects except for East Bethel. And then, when we couldn't collect enough in any given year to meet the annual debt service payment, we would then need to collect, we would essentially have a reserve capacity loan. It would basically be, become a credit that we'd have to pay back eventually. Over time, that whole scenario was based on assumptions of growth that never panned out with the recession, and so the Met Council understood that and basically put in a circuit breaker that would relieve us of that total liability if our liability at any point in time reached a certain level. The idea is they didn't want it to become the credit card that can never be paid back, and then it becomes detrimental to our financial health as a city, and then has a larger impact on the region as a, as a growth community. So that was set at one point two million dollars. We were officially notified by the Met Council just a couple of weeks ago that we officially hit that threshold in two thousand twenty. So with that, that SAC charge has been frozen. We will need to collect that through two thousand thirty, so that now has a sunset, which it did not have before. And also, we have the ability then to turn the, that one point two million dollars of outstanding liability into a fixed loan repayment with an option of ten, fifteen, or twenty years. In all of our financial modeling and in previous discussions with the council, we've explained that we're assuming a twenty-year, and our utility funds right now cash flow is king. And so that's what we would recommend from the council. One thing to point out is that circuit breaker is good for the community. A rough estimate, if you take a look at that initial project of sixteen point four million dollars, the interest that it would accrue over the term of the bond, and then you apply what we've paid so far, what we have outstanding in the reserve capacity loan, and what we would likely pay in the coming future, we're probably relieving the city of around ten million dollars in liability. So, I, at this point, we would recommend direction from the council to set the term for the reserve capacity loan repayment at twenty years.
I'm completely on board with that. Any objections to that?
No, but I got a question. I mean, there isn't anything that's going to turn the circuit breaker back on or off. I guess I don't know what the right term is, so if we start developing like crazy. So I see your head shaking, so that's not going to happen. Is there any potential resentment or anything, or maybe we don't care, from the Met Council of if we do start to develop and, and we could be potentially paying this back?
I don't think so, because we're still identified as one of their fastest-growth cities in the metro area in their twenty forty comp plan. So they recognize that there's the potential we might take off. But if you recall, what happened is the city of East Bethel was in a similar arrangement to the one we were, we were the pilot project, and then the similar approach to extending infrastructure in the same fashion as extended to Elko New Market was done in East Bethel. East Bethel started getting some fine, you know, the, the burden of the reserve capacity loan was becoming too great, and so they negotiated a circuit breaker. And we simply used the what's fair is fair approach and said the similar logic would apply to us, and the Met Council was very okay with it. They'd already gone through whatever logic process that made it okay when they did it with East Bethel. And they know that there's a chance that after they put this in place, whether it's next year, two years, ten years down the road, that we may start to grow significantly. But they're still going to collect regular SAC charges from us to help pay for it. Essentially, what they're deciding is that once that trigger hits, that interceptor infrastructure that they originally going to make us pay for in its entirety is just going to become part of the, get absorbed and become part of the larger system and, from a repayment standpoint, and then we'll just be a regular payer. They still will be collecting that extra surcharge from us through two thousand thirty, so if we do take off, they will still get the benefit of that for purposes of that loan repayment, and I think that's, that's the compromise there.
Still good with? Any objections?
Okay, thank you.
Feel good?
I do.
All right. On to public works. If for you, no. Police?
Nothing specific, but the chief is here tonight. If you have any questions?
All right, Hollywood, it's your show. Anything, Brady?
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. No, nothing.
You're Hollywood now.
Hollywood? All right.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for the chief?
Yeah. Who are you and what have you done with Brady?
I'm building up for some big meetings coming up.
Fair enough. All right, thanks, Brady. Anything for fire? Someone not? Engineering?
A quick item. We issued a permit today contingent on payment of the permit fee for periodic stacking of vehicles along France Avenue associated with possible queuing of vehicles waiting to get into the food shelf site during their events. And I agreed to ask the council whether they'd be willing to waive the hundred and twenty-five dollar permit fee. Since it's a nonprofit and a, and a good cause, and really will have minimal impact on staff other than my time to issue the permit. It's required under the right-of-way ordinance. They are exempt from registration and registration fees because there's nothing permanent left in the right-of-way, but the permit fee, I don't have authority to waive, so just wanted to toss it out to get a reaction from council, whether that could be waived.
I'm all for it.
Leave it.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, the issue here is normally with their nonprofits, if you think about their events, they have an event permit, which covers the review and, and approval of all of their traffic issues, which tend to be one-offs. It's unusual, or it's the first time we've have an issue with a nonprofit with something that will be a regular, although infrequent thing, you know, once, once or twice, you know, twice a month on average, so. If you are going to waive the fee, we would be looking for a motion then, if we could, a motion to waive the application, right-of-way application fee for the hope for the community food shelf.
So. Anyone?
Second.
Okay. Motion by me, second by Amanda. Kate? Want to vote?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Vote aye as well.
Okay, on a, on a related, on a related note to that, I'd like to give the council an update, which will save me typing tomorrow. So the food shelf has also requested a second access into their current site. This, quite honestly, was not something that had come up in any of our previous discussions related to their use of the site until they basically got in and started operations. Over the course of our discussions with them, they've moved from what I would call a park-and-pickup process, where you park, you go get your groceries, and they're brought out to your car, to what you see more commonly is just a drive-through operation. It tends to be more efficient, and in the COVID environment reduces contact with individuals, everybody involved, so it's understandable. However, that particular approach, combined with the dramatic increase in the number of families that they're serving, has, requires more room for stacking, et cetera, and from a flow standpoint, the current parking situation simply won't work. Corey, Rich, Renee, and I have worked with them and identified a solution we think will work, although there may be occasional stacking out on France Avenue, which would require the installation of a second entrance. Where we're at right now is we would be allowing them to basically temporarily plow through and drive over the grass. When the weather gets warmer, Corey and his crew would go in and basically cut and prepare a subgrade, and then we'd hire somebody to come in and pave, and the food shelf would pay for the cost of materials and the paving for that, since there's really no need for it except for their purpose, and they've indicated that they do have funds for that. So I would like, just want to make sure that the council's okay with that approach and the idea that we would basically handle the construction and, and be okay with the food shelf reimbursing us for the materials for the work that we do. We volunteer our labor, and they would pay for the, and then the cost of the paving, which we can't do in-house.
Any objections to that?
No.
Okay, I think we're, I think everyone's on board, Tom.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and share a different screen here. Can y'all see my screen? Okay. Okay, the first item, a report that we wanted to share with you, and these are end-of-year reports we do with the city's planning commission, is just to review the accomplishments of the planning commission over the previous year, so I'm going to run through some accomplishments in two thousand twenty. The planning commission reviewed three ordinance amendments, garbage cans and recreational vehicles, administration and enforcement of zoning ordinance, cleaning up, some language there, and then the accessory dwelling unit discussion, which took several months, and these three items resulted in amendments to the city zoning ordinance. And discussion, ordinance amendment discussion was the rental registration, which the council decided not to pursue. Various land use applications that were reviewed was, were Ridgeview Estates rezoning and preliminary plat, RNF properties grading permit for Mr. Ryan, considered a vacation of right-of-way, Mark and Lori Rogers, the QuickTrip application, which had multiple land use-related requests. They recommended approval of a variance for the New Market Bank project in the downtown. Extended zoning approvals for Dakota Acres second edition apartment site, and also consider, excuse me, I'm considered a right-of-way vacation for another property in Elko. And then other projects that they concentrated on during two thousand twenty was just reviewing that affordable housing toolbox and how the city may foster affordable housing. So we think they were, it was a good year. They got a lot done in terms of ordinance review and, and reviewing applications. The next item on the agenda is a quick review of the two thousand twenty building permit report. First slide here shows the number of permits that we issued in each category from basic building permits, which could include decks and sheds and things like that. Single-family homes, commercial development, mechanical plumbing, fence, basements, decks, porches. You can see we're in this all-inclusive category above. We're down from two thousand nineteen, but two thousand nineteen was really a not necessarily a misrepresentation, but there was a severe hailstorm that went through the community that resulted in literally hundreds of re-roughened reciding permits, so that was the, the peak there. If you take that out, we're actually up permits from previous years. Single-family home permits is, and this is a, one that is typically of greatest interest. We are up from two thousand and nineteen. We issued eighteen housing unit permits. You'll note in two thousand eighteen, we issued thirty-one. The council may recall that was the year the city sold lots to a townhouse developer, and there were thirteen townhouse units pulled that year, so that's part of the influx in that year, as well as the number of permits in the farm. But generally, we are up from the previous year in terms of permits. Similar chart. This breaks down the new home permits by development. You can see Boulder Heights was introduced, so the most permits were issued in the Boulder Heights development. In Boulder point seventh edition, which is an area down on Oxford Lane. Dakota Acres first edition is the townhouse development. We issued a couple of single-family homes in the farm, and then our first permit in Pete's Hill. This is a, simply a list of builders that we issued permits to. Not, you know, we haven't seen the introduction of any national builders. These are basically smaller local builders. This is a comparison with a five-year comparison with area cities, compares the number of permits that have been issued in the last five years. Of course, Lakeville always, for many years, has topped the charts as one of the highest growth areas in the cities. You can see we are at the lowest end of the five-year total when compared to, you can see Dundas, Montgomery, Faribault, Bell Plain, just the cities in Scott County, as well as cities surrounding us.
But it should be noted, though, that even with that, we had ninety-one units over that period, so if you take a look at the community, knowing that we have around fifteen hundred total units at this point, and you do the quick math, that still means that we are looking at about a six percent growth rate, which compared to the state as a whole is still not anything to, to sneeze at. We just know that with the markets around us, we know that there's probably more market potential. But again, one of the biggest limitations up until Pete's Hill and Dakota Acres, those subdivisions that you saw coming online was lot, available lot inventory sufficient to meet the market, and in the next presentation, Renee will talk a little bit more about market, or lot inventory.
Yeah, this is just a map depicting the location of the same cities. And the conclusion is compared to two thousand nineteen, we did see an increase in building permit activity for almost all types of building permits. The, again, we talked about the unusual increase in some of the numbers resulting from that hailstorm, but we do look forward to a good year this year with continued growth. We've already issued or received several housing unit permits in just the first several weeks of this year, which is very promising. We expect a prosperous year. Or received several housing unit permits in just the first several weeks of this year, which is very promising, we expect a prosperous year. We did prepare another report, which was in your packet, which was in a single-family lot. Vacant lot inventory, actually both. Residential and commercial. So we have a total of 173 vacant lots that could be built on within the city. And broken down by development here's. Number of lots you can see, just opening up Boulder Heights and Pete's Hill this past fall was will be really beneficial.
A question, Renee, when you did the, when you were doing this inventory, this would also include, for instance. Double lots where somebody may own the lot next to them. So that's for, if you drove by, you wouldn't know there was a lot, so to speak, because it's somebody's yard. Technically could be built on or Woodcrest where we have lots that may have some difficulties with sanitary sewer, et cetera. Depending on whether they're located within that development.
That's correct, those are most notably in Elko. Woodcrest, and then there are a couple unplatted lots where. As Tom said, it's maybe a homeowner owns two parcels, their house is on one, they would technically be eligible for another building permit. But that doesn't mean the lot is for sale or available.
So, so long and short, the lot inventory we have is in Boulder Heights, the single fan, the Pete's Hill. When we're talking single-family lots, Pete's Hill and the remaining lots in the farm. Otherwise, the large portion of the developments, a large portion of our remaining lots are townhome pads, correct?
Yes, there are 89 lots available for single-family homes and 84 for attached. Attached or detached townhomes, which would be part of an association. So just the true basic single-family 89 lots.
So the rule of thumb, if you talk to pundits, is that you you're, you should have roughly three years. Of inventory available at any point in time to have sufficient inventory in mix to be able to meet all demand that's out there. That would be ideal. You'll hear anywheres from eight down to as little as 18 months. To be honest, we don't know what that full demand is, but if you look at the communities around us and look at the numbers that they're putting up, that gives one indication. It's been a few years, but the Scott County CDA has done some market work. And that suggests that our market is somewhere maybe around potentially up to 70. I think it's 72 single-family homes per year. And if you take a look at the Met Council's growth projections for the community. And you do simple math, you end up in that same range. So we feel that we are still anemic on our single-family lot inventory. And one thing you'll see here that we don't see is there's no multi-family. We're pretty much a twin home, townhome and primarily single-family community. Although as the council's aware, there are some projects that have been proposed or in process moving forward.
Do we have any idea what the 89 single-family lots, like average lot price is and how it compares to, you know, some of the surrounding? Areas?
No. I can't necessarily answer that. A lot of the lots aren't, they're not on the market on the MLS. They have, the developers have reached agreements with private builders that they work with. So we aren't completely aware of the the lot price. We see a lot of the packages coming on the MLS now with the the home package, which. Seems to be ranging from about 450,000 to. 600,000. What part is attributed to the lot, I don't know. We do like to provide a. A map to show the vacant lots, so that is available in your packet and also on the city's website. And then we also map commercial, vacant, commercial and industrial property. And we do not have any vacant industrial land available within the city. But this is, this map shows seven vacant commercial lots. Anybody have any questions about the vacant lot inventory? Okay, and the last thing, I just wanted to review some timelines and history related to the QuickTrip. Development. So with that, I wanted to inform you that the that the city first had contact in an informal meeting with QuickTrip. In June of 2019, and it was a real estate broker that had contacted the city. And they brought the QuickTrip representative to the city to make introductions. In June of 2019. And then our records show that basically between June of 2019 and March of 2020. QuickTrip was likely doing due diligence on the site. We had been contacted by an agency doing an environmental, Phase One environmental assessment in November. Title Research had discovered that there were covenants placed by the original developers. So QuickTrip had to understand those covenants. And it was discovered that, you know, their prototype building. That they build didn't necessarily match the covenants that had been placed by the developers. So understanding there was some dialogue between QuickTrip and the original developer during that timeframe. Then in March of 2020. Was the first sign that we, QuickTrip came back to the city with a concept plan they had put together. So maybe there is an assumption at that point that they've entered into some kind of option agreement or purchase agreement. So we had what we normally call a development review team meeting. It's, it's a very informal meeting where city staff gives the developer as much feedback as they can regarding a concept plan that they've prepared. So fast forward to March, I'm sorry, June, I think mid-June of 2020. The city received the official land, land use applications. And that included a request to rezone the property, a request for plat approval. Their proposed use required an application for conditional use permit for the convenience store and commercial car wash. And a request for variants to allow some signage that we, our ordinance doesn't typically allow. And then to allow their gas pumps to be closer together than our ordinance allows. Also staff prepared a report outlining their application, which was presented to the planning commission in July. And a public hearing was held at that time. Public testimony was received. And the planning commission did make a recommendation for approval of all of the applications. To the city council with some recommended changes. Recommended changes. Were are things that would be very typical in the review of any planning applications. That put things back in QuickTrip's court. And they did submit the revised documents containing the recommended changes to the city in late August. So in late August, city staff drafted all of the approval documents. And that would be placed on the city council agenda in September. And these include. An ordinance approving the rezoning, resolutions approving the plat. The variants and the conditional use permits. And the city attorney's office drafted a development contract. And at that point, we were waiting for just a few things. QuickTrip needed to obtain easements through two adjacent properties. One was for a private water line. My understanding is that has been secured and signed. And one was, one easement was for a private storm sewer line, is to get the storm water from. The QuickTrip site to the stormwater retention pond that has already been constructed. And they also needed to. Secure or finalize a shared access maintenance agreement. An easement for the common roadway that runs through or that is proposed to run through the site from Marketplace Boulevard to France Avenue. And I'm just gonna highlight on a map quickly, the, you know, the three things that we were waiting for as as a city to be able to move this forward. Was evidence of an easement for this water line. This is private property. Evidence, evidence of easement for the storm sewer line. Which is also on private property. And then this is a private road that exists. And would be, is proposed to be extended. So the city doesn't have anything to do with the construction or maintenance of this road. However, we need to see evidence of legal documents that there are agreements, easements and agreements in place. The cross easements between the benefiting property owners. To date. Really since September, we've just been moving this forward, waiting for these items to be submitted. And at this time. They haven't been submitted. We have been in communications with the adjacent property owners. We know that they've been working on them. We don't believe there's any reason they won't eventually get done. The project has been. You know, originally, when we've met in the spring of 2019, we thought this would be a 2021 construction project. QuickTrip has delayed the project to 2022, so I don't think some of these, you know, getting these items done are. Necessarily the top of their priority list at this point. I think that's all that I really wanted to update the council and the public on, if you have any questions.
I'd like to say, can you roll back to the first slide of the timeline? So I'm gonna be a little less, a little more direct than Renee was on this particular item. She provided a lot of information, but the reason we put it on the council agenda tonight. Was recent and quite honestly, over the last year. Comments and a lot of discussions, social media. About the city holding up the project. And so we kind of wanted to set the record straight on this particular item. So as we look through the timeline, the actual period of time in which the city actually had an actionable item. Wasn't until June when they submitted an application. At which time we followed a normal process with normal timelines. To get them to the point where they basically had, where the project was sitting on our desk with a bow on top pending them getting. Providing us with that easement information that they were providing us for. Back in the early part of this process and. While they were working through this covenant issue, everybody will recall the red roof issue. You know, the city was holding up the project because it didn't meet the city's design requirements. In actuality, we had nothing to do with that, and in fact, we didn't even have an application or anything on our desk to respond to. We actually hadn't even seen the concept plan at that particular point in time, so we had nothing to respond to. That's a private issue related to private covenants and private design requirements within the development of which the city wasn't party to. And those things can take time to work through, which the developer and and the. QuickTrip folks worked through eventually, but it took time. Once we received the application, it was promptly reviewed under normal circumstances. There wasn't any particularly large issues associated with it that you don't normally see with a commercial project. QuickTrip is a very good applicant, they they addressed all the issues and concerns. But they still needed to make sure and demonstrate that they had. Easements for their private utilities, Renee, if you could move forward to your site plan. So, this one, yes. So with regards to the design, they were proposing to obtain their service lines and their private road access to their site. Across other private properties, so their private utilities across private properties. The city, A, doesn't own or maintain the infrastructure and it's on private property. And so it's not our role as the city to, A, either negotiate with those individual property owners for QuickTrip's infrastructure. Or B, strong arm or twist the arms of individual property owners and infringe upon their property rights with regards to that property infrastructure either. Now, as a city, of course, we want to see the development, so our job is to help grease the wheels where we can. And we were in regular contact with all the parties involved. And through the process, they continually advised us that they're working through it. There wasn't going to be anything that was going to be a major holdup, but it was taking time, which it did. So where we are today is essentially where we've been for a while, we're waiting on easements being fully wrapped up. And at such time, we fully anticipate that this is going to be on a consent item on a council agenda. And hopefully the not-too-distant future. Are there any questions?
I don't have any question. Sorry, I was just gonna say, you, Renee and Tom for giving that update. I was hooked into a social media commenting war, maybe. This is something that it's probably in my, you know. Monday, my nine-to-five life of working in government that I get a little frustrated. Constantly taking the blame and the city taking the blame. And so I felt that if we can provide this information, maybe we can. I guess maybe lessen the the frustration from our community.
What you're saying, if I should pull down, first word tonight, that it's DHS's fault?
Please do not do that.
I just want to chime in quick. Tom, Renee, I appreciate you guys putting this together and I appreciate this being on the, in the meeting tonight. I also want to thank Bryce and Amanda for jumping on the social media war and kind of fighting battles. I think until we start seeing stuff built up in the market, there's always going to be this perception that we just can't get anything done. Obviously, it's a lot more complicated, a lot of impatient residents that just want action, that want to see things built. And I, I share that, I think we probably all share that to some degree. So obviously, a little bit more complicated than that, but I I'm, I haven't heard a single thing to suggest that QuickTrip is no longer interested in Elko's market. All, every step of the way, they've expressed their strong desire to be in our market. It's just a process, it's a painful process sometimes, sometimes it's not so painful. But this is going to be a good project for the city. And I appreciate all the work staff's done and the council members that jumped on to fight the good fight on. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That's all that I have for community development updates, unless the council has any additional questions.
Not hearing any questions jump up, so nice job. All right, on to parks.
We have nothing specific under parks unless you have any questions for Mark.
So on the. Of social media, oh, Mark is muted, he's talking, I'll let him talk. Maybe I won't. On social media, I was also tagged and commented and then Kate commented as well before I did, but about the farmer's market. And I don't know if there's any information about what what the process is. And I know, I think last meeting we talked about, or you gave an update on the location search. And I don't know if there's any more information that you can provide.
So at this particular, actually Kevin is in the office, I just heard him down the hallway. In fact, while we're, while we're holding this meeting, he's currently working on an interested vendors list, believe it or not. So if you don't mind, we can put a pin in that for a minute or two, I can see if he's available to come in and give a report on that specifically.
You don't have to terribly put him on the spot if he's not going to be ready.
It's what we pay him for. Just give you a minute.
Mark, you're muted, I don't know that, if you can unmute yourself.
No, I'm unmuted, just want to let you know both rinks are open now. And for the first time in three years, we have rinks in both cities. And before that, we had one actual rink and then one square rink, which is where the skate park is. And so now we have our first regulation rink in the city that is operating. Corey's got, and guys have done a nice job of getting them both open. And the lights are not too far off, and I've been fielding quite a few questions from folks. Glad to see that that we now have a ice rink in both cities, and so that's been a real, a real plus. We did get the reimbursement from. Uh, we did get the reimbursement from uh, the uh, Manwatan Sioux. I'd like to thank them publicly uh, for uh, the eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars that we received to construct the Woodcrest uh, Wind Rose Trail. Uh, and uh, they were generous enough to uh, uh, kind of uh, uh, let us take an extra six months to finish that project. And then finally, uh, we were talking about Boulder Heights before. Uh, staff is gonna get together next Wednesday when I start talking about uh, the Boulder Heights Park uh, there as well too and get that process started. Uh, update the capital outlet plan for parks and uh, move forward on that. So uh, those three things, uh, I just wanted to mention uh, real quick.
I just wanna confirm that to pick on you, Mark. We are, we're still one city, right?
Or what? Well, yeah, we're one city. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear. I didn't miss anything, right?
No, but uh, as you can imagine, I hear it uh, quite a bit uh, from the uh, from the Elko's, the new market side, so to speak, so.
I just couldn't let it go.
No.
You should've heard Renee in uh, our uh, interview panel for um, for the planning commission. But we won't rehash.
Stop. I wanna keep my job.
At least Mark had the right cities involved.
Yeah, right?
So uh, while we were uh, going through the Quick Trip stuff, uh, looks like Kevin had left for the evening. So I won't be able to answer any highly detailed questions, but I can provide an overview based on updates he's given me. So the St. Paul Farmer's Market has indicated that they would look to be sponsoring or hosting or administering um, our Farmer's Market. There is a, a whole infrastructure side there that we then don't have to provide, which makes it a lot easier to be able to do this. Um, and also promote uh, the Farmer's Market. What we would be contributing at this point is kind of like the local onsite facilitation aspect of it. We still are working on finalizing the site where it's gonna be located. We're in the process of developing a potentially interested vendors list. So there's still details. So we're not at a point where we say it's gonna be these days, this location, starting on this date. We still have a distance to go, but all indications are is that we will have Farmer's Market this summer. We just have, now that we have the uh, St. Paul Farmer's Market co-op indicated that they're gonna be supportive of this and participate partners on this. Um, there's still all the details we have to work through. So it is going forward. Once we have information, of course, we're gonna promote the heck out of it. We're just not that far along in the process yet.
Tom, do you know, was anything mentioned to Kevin about Jeff at Trader Smart really being interested, giving up his parking lot for Trader Smart?
I did have that discussion with him. Um, but we have other sites that we have also looked at and that site I know was evaluated. It's still on the table, but I don't think it's our primary site at this location. One of the concerns of um, related to it that I am aware of is the availability of power, which is a requirement for some of the vendors.
I think I would only add that uh, we had, when we did the survey, we had a list of about twelve vendors and uh, Kevin's writing a note to them right now, uh, uh, trying to get their interest and gauge that as well too, and get them together and talk about it a bit more as well too. Try and get the local people as much as possible.
If I were to post something, could other vendor, potential vendors that did not fill out that survey reach out?
Oh, sure.
Yes, um, just have them contact Kevin directly. He's in the process of, of developing that potential vendor list right now.
Okay, I'm really excited for this Farmer's Market, so sorry, I'm taking up.
No, it's a good question. We, we, we don't have any definition on some of the details yet, which is why you haven't had an update. When we do, of course, the council will be the first to know.
Terrific. Anything else on parks or recreation? The only other thing to mention on that is uh, Kevin and I are talking to the baseball team here uh, next Monday uh, for baseball and softball programs. And uh, uh, going through some of the protocols uh, out of the uh, January tenth uh, uh, so to speak, executive order uh, from the governor on that together. And then uh, hopefully uh, uh, you know, the end result will be uh, that we'll have some, that we'll have that programming uh, this summer uh, for sure.
Appreciate you, appreciate the update, Mark.
Okay, thanks.
All right, C C E C.
That's me. So we had our first meeting and it was a lot of fun. So thanks for letting me join that committee. Um, we picked a date for the egg hunt and it's going to be a drive-through event um, on March twenty-seven. And so we really hashed out a lot of details for that event. Um, typically, they give, uh, you get to pick a big prize or the kids get to pick a big prize at the end. Um, but we are going to hold off and hopefully be able to do something at maybe the community picnic or Halloween if we are able to have those events, not pending, you know, our current state. Um, the event will be free, similar to the Halloween drive-through. So that was majority of the, the meeting. Um, let's see, and I think there'll be a, a flyer and some information coming out soon. Is Linda still on? Did I miss anything?
Nope, you did great. Thanks.
Good question, and maybe it's a stupid one. Uh, so are the dates set for everything else the rest of the year? And I'm just curious why Halloween is on the twenty-third and not the thirty.
We've traditionally done it the weekend before Halloween weekend because of potential conflicts with actual Halloween weekend parties, other events, et cetera. Just traditionally, that's when we've held it.
All right, point taken. I guess I never noticed. I just assumed it was always closer to Halloween.
Yeah, it's usually the Saturday before, um, Saturday, the weekend before.
All right, other committee reports? Uh, scale, scale is not until the second Friday in February, so I don't have any reports there. Exact is next week. Service delivery.
Um, big topic of discussion with service delivery was continued discussion related to the mobile field force. Uh, Brady has been the face and spokesperson for the Chiefs Association as its current president um, on that particular topic. Uh, there has been some back and forth and feedback from the service delivery committee related to the structure of the JT, JPA, primarily related to um, oversight and composition of the governing board for the JPA. Um, and the possible inclusion of appointed or elected officials or the ability for the cities to elect to have an appointed or elected official serve on the board if they so choose rather than or in addition to their chief. Um, we're continuing to work through that. Uh, I would anticipate that we will have the, the, the next meeting of the service delivery committee will basically finalize the JPA. I believe then it will be presented to the executive board for um, comment. And if everybody's on board with it, uh, it's our assumption that it'll be ruled out to the various member agencies then for um, adoption.
Uh, unified transit or unified transit plan steering committee. Uh, Kate and I were both part of that. I, I'll be honest, I'm still kinda digesting that we, it was a two-hour meeting the other day with a lot of, it was really going over, going over priorities and I don't know, I'm still trying to piece together how exactly. It's great to have priorities that really here in the plan. That really came out of that, but it was my first meeting. I'm still kinda new to it. Uh, so I'll have more detailed updates in the future. Kate, you have anything you wanna add?
Well, they're looking at um, all these recommendations and these ideas that they have. They want them sent back and approved or any changes by our next meeting in February. Then they're gonna go ahead and solidify them and bring them on to scale, um, for scale to go ahead and approve. Um, what they also said, Joe, when you logged off, is they would like to have a rebirth of the live, learn, earn transportation committee. So just something to think about. Um, they're hoping that that rebirth of that transportation committee will be able to help with the recommendations from the unified group. So that's what we know. That's what I know.
A lot more I wanna say, but I'm gonna hold that for future meetings. Uh, let's just go right forward, MBTA.
Uh, MBTA met last week. Um, the only thing I was going to say, and Tom Wolf jumped, jumped off, so he's gone. But the, the board really kind of gave kudos to Scott County. John Olrich has been on the board, or on that board for over twenty years. And Dakota County is like nonexistent in that, on that board. And they don't come to many meetings and they've kinda taken a stance against that. And they didn't really talk too much about why, but I just thought it was nice to see um, John representing or Commissioner Oliver representing us um, as in our county. So that's all.
All right, I thirty-five.
Uh, there hasn't been another meeting yet since the last council meeting.
Yeah. Uh, Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, not much from uh, the last update. Um, we are starting to, we have interviews set up for our uh, new admin position. So that's something that we're focused on um, getting done and finding somebody to fill that role.
Uh, all right, on to discussion by council. Anyone have anything they'd like to discuss or bring up?
We talk about it every couple of years, um, and don't know if we wanna revisit it um, of the time of these meetings. I mean, I, I, if it works for everybody to keep it the way, the way it is, it's just, it, it's hard to, to squeeze in a dinner. Um, starting this early. Um, so I don't know if we'd ever consider going back to the six-thirty or seven o'clock timeframes, but I would definitely be open to it. And I don't know if anybody else would, but I'm just fine if we decide not to.
So what you're saying is you're hungry?
No, I am saying I, I ate my dinner when I was off video. Um, but it just, uh, especially in the time of COVID, it makes for all-day Zoom meetings to then jump on to potentially hours of Zoom meetings into the night. So if we'd be open to a break in between, but again, I'm, I can tolerate it, so.
I'm not opposed. I am, I think in the same kind of spot as you with my day, my days.
I don't know, I'm, I personally would be a little opposed. Considering my days are around five AM, so um, the sooner we can wrap up the meetings for the day, uh, it's my preference. But I also wanna be respectful of everyone else's. So there's a strong feeling to move the meeting time. I'm not gonna stand in the way of it.
Not seeing a bunch of people jumping up and down saying, hell, yes, you're right, Josh. Uh, let's just move on and maybe we revisit it towards summer.
I was just gonna say, you know, I'm like, Joe, I start my day pretty early. Um, but you know, I'll do whatever the majority says, but I truly like the earlier meetings 'cause I'm an old grandma. I like to go to bed early.
Bryce, you have an opinion?
Why did I have to go last? It's split decision here, right? Uh, I don't know. I, I guess I don't have a, a strong opinion, but I, I would echo Joe and Kate that I'm more of an early riser and going to bed at eight-thirty is really nice.
Eight-thirty bedtime, that sounds awesome.
It really is.
Josh, are you talking to the kids or you?
All of the above, man. 'Cause I still get up at five o'clock with the damn dog, which who I love is awesome, but.
Did I see you and your dog on, at the Roundabout Cup yesterday, round three?
Uh, well, we do a three-mile loop, so I did it yesterday in the daylight. Otherwise, usually it's eight o'clock, uh, we do our three-mile loop at night here.
Dog's already like three times the size of what I thought I saw.
In the spirit of letting Joe go to bed, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Josh. Pretty much everyone else, but I'll uh, we'll go with Kate on the second, but. Bryce, you wanna go first?
Oh.
I.
Kate?
I.
Amanda?
Hi.
Josh?
Hi.
Well, I as well, me and adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, Joel. Good night, Kate.